Father and the application.
Our Father who art in heaven, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to come before you seeking direction. Your word tells us that man makes his plans and you establish his steps. You tell us that unless you build the house, our labor is in vain. We pray that you would forgive us for calling ourselves Christians. We pray that you would forgive us for calling you God and then having the audacity to indulge ourselves by defining you according to our perception of ourselves. You are a holy, righteous God. You are the Creator of all, and we thank you, Father, for your grace and your mercy, which allows us to call you Father. We thank you that we can be your children. We thank you that you hear our prayers. Father, I pray that you would bless this meeting today powerfully. I pray that you would bless these representatives. I pray that you would bless these concerned citizens that are here today. Father, we ask that you would please be glorified as we unite together to make our communities better places. We recognize, Lord God, once again, that you desire to see an environment that is conducive for health and growth and right thought process, Lord. We pray that you would be blessed in the communities that are hearing this prayer this morning. We pray once again that you would be glorified. We thank you, Father, for providing bold access to you with these prayers through your Son, Jesus Christ. It's in His name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody here in Tonopah and Perump to our meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for March 1st, 2011. First item on our agenda will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Borowski.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless our troops.
Come on, you two. Get over it. Okay, item number two will be action approval of the agenda for the Board of County Commissioners meeting for March 1st, 2011. Mr. Olesman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We can strike number three and four. Do we have any action emergency items this morning?
None that I'm aware of.
Hearing none, strike seven. We want to poll item nine E, as in Edward.
Um, how come?
Uh, there was something lacking on it, and it's gonna come back on the 15th.
We have enough time? We do? Okay. Because I have a couple of problems with it, too.
Yeah, the deadline is the 18th.
Okay.
Uh, we want to poll nine H, as in Henry.
Meaning, we're not gonna hear it this meeting? Is that what you mean?
Right, yeah. Public Works has something else they wanna add to it.
Okay.
We actually have to go to bid on that.
Okay.
Strike number 10.
Yes, we do.
Uh, do we have any closed sessions for labor this morning?
No.
Strike 11 A, B, C, do we have any legal closed sessions?
Yes, we do. I've asked for one.
Not today.
Not today?
Unfortunately, I'm not.
You're not ready yet?
I'm not ready yet.
Okay.
Let's do it at the next meeting.
Okay, or I can just talk to you.
All right, then we can strike D, E, and F. Strike items 12 through 19. Twenty-one A, we're gonna poll per the DA request.
Yeah, we have to bid that, yes.
Twenty-one A?
Twenty-one A, yes, sir. Strike number 22. We're going to poll item 23 B, as in Boy.
No.
No? You wanna leave that on? All right, scratch that. Twenty-four and 26. Strike 29, 30.
What about, uh, what about 27B? I thought we had some problems with that.
I was not informed to pull it.
Um, I wasn't sure if we wanted to pull it for discussion or absolutely pull it. We do have to change the form of the agreement.
I think we need to pull it, then, and just bring it back.
Twenty-seven B, as in Boy.
Are you talking to me, Dan?
Then strike 29 through 33.
Okay.
And I believe that's it.
We oughta be out here by 10:15.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, could we poll 10K just for some points I need to make?
You mean 9K?
I'm sorry, 9K.
When we get to, we do that when we get to consent.
Okay, uh, um, we'll go to number five, announcements. I don't have any forms. Is there any announcements in Perump? Liz, is there any announcements in Perump?
No, there's none here.
Thank you. We'll go to number six. Uh, general public comment, three-minute time limit per person. Action will not be taken or matters considered during this period until specifically included on the agenda item. Louis Decanio.
Good morning. My name is Louis J. Decanio. I live at 1410 North Paddock Avenue in Perump, Nevada. I'm a veteran, voter, taxpayer, and retired businessman. Keeping business local is essential if Perump and-
Excuse me, Mr. Decanio?
Yes.
Mr. Decan- can you move to the other microphone? It sounds like there's a break in the transmission. We're getting about every third word. Let's try the other one.
And if anybody is texting, please turn it off or quit texting. That sometimes interferes with the transmission. Go ahead.
Okay, good morning. My name is Louis J. Decanio. I live at 14-
No, that's-
Pardon me?
Yeah, we're, it still sounds like there's a break in the transmission. Is there anybody from IT there?
Let me move a little farther away, maybe?
Sounds like there's a short in the wire.
Let me try over here.
Liz, take them up to one of the commissioners' mics and see if that's any clearer.
Um, was the pastor, when you heard the pastor, did that sound fine?
No.
No?
No, we, yours is bad, too.
Okay, we think it's on your end. We can redial in. Do you wanna wait for that?
It never rests, Gary.
Wow, that's pretty cute.
Isn't it? I got that at, um, Oddeston's downtown.
Wow, that's-
They made it right there. I think it's pretty cute. Thank you.
Can you hear us now?
That's better.
Good.
Okay, you wanna go on now? Mr. Decanio?
Yes. Good morning. My name is Louis J. Decanio. I live at 1410 North Paddock Avenue, Perump, Nevada. I'm a veteran, voter, taxpayer, and retired businessman. Keeping business local is essential if Perump and Nye County are going to survive and prosper in the future. We have a serious situation, whereas a lot of money and tax dollars are being paid to businesses outside of Perump and Nye County. Recently, one of our schools and the Boys and Girls Club of Perump was shut down due to a lack of funds. If we hired locally, then this would give new business an incentive to relocate to Perump and Nye County. This not only would create jobs for our unemployed citizens, but it would also stimulate the economy for our local businesses, and this would create a cycle of money, which would be a much-needed boost to our economy. Perump has many qualified people and companies, but they must be given the opportunity to prove themselves. A prime example of money leaving our county is the legal firm of Erickson, Thorpe, and Swainston Limited. This law firm located in Reno, Nevada, is in Washoe County, and it handles lawsuits pertaining to Nye County and its employees. Reno, Nevada, is approximately 400 miles away from Perump, and attempting to negotiate or solve a legal problem is not cost-effective due to the distance. Many legal cases drag on for long periods of time at an enormous cost to the taxpayer. Mr. Thomas Becco, an attorney with the law firm, seems to handle all the cases concerning Nye County. Mr. Becco, when questioned, would not state what his hourly rate was, but it's rumored he charges Nye County $350 per hour, but that's only a rumor because he wouldn't state exactly what he was making. This amount not only sounds excessive, but none of this money is spent in Nye County. I'm sure our county commissioners can find a qualified law firm right here in Perump at a much better rate, and the money would stay here locally. This is just one example of how we can help our town and county when hiring companies and firms to do much-needed work in our community. Keeping things local may not solve all the problems, but it's a good start. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I address Mr. Decanio's comments?
Uh, yes, you can. Yes, you can.
Mr. Decanio, it's Commissioner Eastley in Tonopah. Um, Mr. Becco and Erickson, Swainston, and Thorpe, those are the attorneys that are used by the Pool Pact. The Pool Pact is our insurance pool. They select attorneys for us when it's necessary to refer legal cases to our insurance carriers. So, Nye County isn't engaging their services directly. They, uh, they are employed through the Nevada Pool Pact.
Well, the only thing I'd like to say is, can't you commissioners talk to that insurance people to hire a law firm that's local here? Because it actually makes things a lot more cost-effective to deal with somebody right here rather than doing everything long-distance at 400 miles away. It drags things out, and basically, it runs up the cost, and it's our taxpayer money. And plus, it would create jobs for Nye County.
Mr. Decanio, your points are well-taken, and we appreciate that constructive input. What I would suggest you do is contact Mr. Wayne Carlson with the Nevada, with the Pool Pact, and make that recommendation to him.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and we'll be happy to give you that number if you'd like it.
Uh, yes, please.
Louis, I can't, I can't give it to you right now, but I'll contact you and make sure that you get it, okay?
Okay, fine, thank you.
Oh, yeah, Liz will have it. If you see Liz, the administrative assistant there, she's got it. She'll give it to you.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
Okay, is there any other general public comment? If there's not, we'll go to item number eight. Action, Commissioners' management comments. This item limits to announcements, topics, issues proposed for future workshops or agendas. Commissioner Wickman.
You know that gal down there at the end of the, yeah.
A rose by any other name.
The road queen.
Uh, I attended a meeting yesterday with NDOT for trying to gain support for our SB-49.
Is that scheduled for hearing yet?
Yeah, it's scheduled on the 10th.
Okay.
And that is one of my announcements. I'll be attending that to give testimony on the, on the 10th of March. Between now and the 10th, I'm leaving Thursday for Washington, DC, where I'll attend the Public Land Steering Committee meeting for the National Naco and the Western Interstate Region Meeting and the Western, we have appointments with the Western Caucus. So, it's gonna be a full, full week, but I won't be returning until the 9th. I'm gonna take a couple days off while I'm back there. That's all I gotta tell ya.
Commissioner Borowski.
Yes, um, I attended a High Desert Resource Conservation and Development Council meeting last Friday. It was something that I inherited from another commissioner, and I thank her for that because I'm quite interested in it. And they are looking for two new members who could come from either Tonopah, Perump, Beatty, or Amagosa. So, if anyone would like to join that, please contact me, and if nothing else, it would look real good on your resume in the future.
And what is that again, Butch?
The High Desert Resource Conservation-
Oh, R-C-N-D.
R-C-D, R-C-N-D, yeah. Yeah, and I thank you for sending me that. Interesting. And it has gotten us a couple of small grants.
Good.
That, by the way, they're offering us another $2,031, and I'll be putting that on agenda to-
For your trails?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
For the trails at the eye. And then, I would like to pick the board's brain or, or whatever way, Mr. Coonsy, you think I can do it. Okay.
You can pick what's left of our brains.
I'll put it to you this way.
Which is in line?
There are some, there are some folks in Perump that would like to have the Perump meetings at night. So, do I put an agenda item on, um, just run it through the county manager?
That's really the only appropriate thing you can do at this stage, is to offer items that you wanna put on a future agenda. You really can't ask for a consensus or-
Well, I was looking for a little advice to go that direction, but-
Rick, if you could do me a favor when you agendize that for Commissioner Borowski, if you could also include information related to the number of employees that we would have, who would be working overtime that evening, because it's not part of the normal workday? Because I'm sure Sam would be in that position, and she's already understaffed. So, essentially, everybody comes, who comes in, except for those who are salaried, would be working overtime?
And I was aware of that. I, I just, yeah. I've just been asked to do it, and, uh, we could put it up for discussion and see what the costs are and move on from there. And I believe that's all I have today.
Commissioner Eastley.
I have a question for Commissioner Wickman. Then are you gonna be, we have a CNRWA meeting on Friday, the 11th, in Eureka. You're gonna be there? I will. Even though you testify on the 10th? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, yesterday, I was in Carson City and testified on SB-155. SB-155 is an act related to zoning, specifically allowing certain unincorporated towns the option to control planning and zoning. And in this case, this was the Perump bill. And I just wanna say on the record, Commissioner Shinhopin was there, and I want to let everybody know what an excellent job he did when he testified, and that's the extent of my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tannenbaum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Eastley, for that. I have a couple little things. On March 12th, at 3:00 PM at the Perump Museum, there'll be a, another chance for people who are interested in Yucca Mountain, take a look at the new exhibit there. And people always come out who are opposed to things. We'd love it if people who are in favor of this would come out also. I believe on the 15th, we may have the resolution for Yucca Mountain. Kind of looking at our manager, but we'll find out. But on the 12th, 3:00 PM, the Perump Museum, please come out for that. The Monday following that is the public hearing on the Town Board, disposition of the Town Board, whether it should be on the ballot. That's 6:00 PM, I believe, March 14th. So, come out and bring your facts and tell us what you think. And then April 8th, 9th, and 10th is the Fourth Annual Acoustic Grass Music Festival that'll be held at the VFW Hall on Homestead. Proceeds go to the VFW. We also have, the Disabled American Veterans will be there, raising money, a few other worthy charities. So, come on down and support the local veterans and enjoy some good music. Friday is acoustic music. It can be folk, country, anything acoustic. Saturday's all about bluegrass, and Sunday's a little mix of both. So, it's all free, and we give away a wheelbarrow full of beer. So, come on down.
And I donate a wheelbarrow.
You get the wheelbarrow and the beer in Commissioner Hollis'.
Is it loose, or is it in cans?
It'll all be, yeah. We just pour it in there. No, it's all bottles, cans, and Commissioner Hollis is donating the wheelbarrow for us this year.
A wheelbarrow of beer and a straw.
And you gotta drink it on-site. This year, we're asking, we're, we're doing something different this year. You have to be present to win. So, show up. And that drawing will be 2:00 Sunday, and we'll also have drawings for other items all day through Saturday. So, those are those items, and I think that's everything.
Commissioner Shinhopin, I, I think I know someone who's gonna be really disappointed that they won the T-shirt instead of the wheelbarrow.
The wheelbarrow.
Yeah, they'll be a few disappointed. Thank you.
Uh, Rick, do you have anything?
Just one thing, real briefly. Liz will be contacting each of you to set up a workshop, budget workshop, sometime in April. So, you'll be getting noticed from her. Try and get that pulled together.
Okay. Lorraine, do you have any?
Just a reminder of the teleconference Friday at 8:30.
8:30, we have a telephone call.
I can't be there. Testifying before Senate Government Affairs on Central Nevada Water Authority, so can't be there. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Uh, I know at the, uh, Perump Museum, we have a new artifact that everybody will be interested in seeing, the drill rig that NWRPO has constructed there. So, everybody come by and, and see us on, at the Perump Museum. All right, uh, we'll go to item number nine, Consent. Action, discussion of any item from the Consent items that need to be reviewed before decision is made.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to poll 9K along with Mr. Coonsy.
Anything else?
No, that's all.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Motion to approve items nine-
Oops, oops, oops. Uh, nine N, like Nancy.
N?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to approve items nine B, C, and D, F, and G, I through I, and J, K, and L.
Okay. Case been ruled.
Case been ruled.
L and M, I'm sorry. L and M, O through V.
One second. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Wickman to approve items B through D, F through G, I, J, L, M, O through V. I have a second by Commissioner Borowski. Further discussion? Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes, uh, 5-0. Okay, we'll go to item K, action, 9K, action approval to amend three professional services agreements with one Terra Spectra to increase the not exceed amount by $100,000 and to revise the scope of work to include land use planning and environmental support. Number two, Mary Ellen Giappone, to increase the not exceed amount by $100,000 included in professional fees rate and revise the scope of work to include water resources, RS-2477 road designation and field activity support. And number three, Catherine Gilmore, LLC, to revise the scope of work to include support for land management impact mitigation and RS-2477 road.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Again, this is no reflection on you, Commissioner Wickman. I do support the monies being allocated for RS-2477 roads. The issue I have, when I read this item, it seems to me a little fuzzy that whether this is $100,000 for everything, or is it a total of $285,000 after you look at the contract? So, that was my main concern, that, that the public, when they look at this, might not have, um, been able to read deep enough into this to figure that out. Mr. Coonsy, you had a-
May I respond to?
Yeah.
The only thing I know for sure on this, this is all inclusive, so I'm assuming it's for a number of things. The only thing that's required for the Minor County Road Project is that someone from the NWRPO office must act as their primary investigator, and that is the final step in our QAQC process. So, it's a simple, they're, they have to review for oversight, and that's it. So, I can't imagine that there'd be $200,000-plus designated for Minor County Road Project.
You got a question, Commissioner Borowski?
Well, no, I, you wanted to pull it, too.
No, yeah.
I thought maybe you had a different one than I did.
Well, I, just to comment on the one thing, 'cause I do agree, when I first looked at it, there was confusion there. But after researching it and looking at it, it appears that what the contract is stating is that under item number one, it's adding $100,000 to the existing contract-
Exactly.
And they're also increasing the scope of work.
Right.
Um, and so, that's, would appear to me to be correctly, contractually correct. Even like I said, the agenda probably could've been written more clearly, but contractually might follow what they're doing there. The one comment I had is the contract with Terra Spectra. When we were researching it, it came to my attention that Terra Spectra is actually a DBA. The company is actually Spectra Geometrics, Inc., doing business as Terra Spectra. So, if you're gonna prove the contract, I would request that we put the correct legal name that the contract is with, Spectra Geometrics, Inc., doing business as Terra Spectra.
And Daryl is there. It'd be nice to have him respond to Butch as well.
Yeah.
Gal, do you have some comments on this item?
There are quite a few projects included in these. Includes the two resource management plans that we are interacting with, as cooperating agencies with the Southern Nevada and the Battle Mountain District, some work we're doing at the Habergosse Valley Science and Tech Park, the RS-2477 road designation, and the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. So, there's quite a few different projects that these consultants are assisting us with. It's not just the RS-2477 road.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I had a couple questions asked of, it's, I think it's self-explanatory when you look at the agendas, but I'd like it to be said in an open meeting here. We approved L, and that's reduced the amount from Buco, and that's going over to Mary Ellen to finish that work. There were people asking me why we were increasing, you know, the amount. It's because this work needs to be done. I just, stop me if I'm stepping over to open meeting things. The, and the other, come on, Dan. I'm sleep deprived. The other, the other thing is, and it's probably, Mr. Lacy, he could explain this. This money that we're spending is, is money given for these purposes. Is that correct?
That's correct. All this money comes from the groundwater evaluation grant or from our Oversight Fund for Yucca Mountain Project.
Right, so it's not like money we can pull out and use for roads or something else. It's money that's designated. It was brought in for that purpose.
That's correct.
That's all I wanted to have clear on the record. If I'm wrong, just say so, otherwise you don't have to say anything. And that's it. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Like to make, like to make a motion to approve items nine K, one, two, and three, with the corrections that were noted by Mr. Coonsy. I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wickman to approve items one, two, and three with the corrections that were stated, seconded by Commissioner Eastley. Further discussion? Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes, 5-0. Okay, we'll go to item nine N. Okay, we'll go to item, um, nine N, action approval to enter into e-payment, uh, service agreement with Point and Pay LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't know who to direct this to, uh, unless Mr. Michael, oh, there he is, hi, Michael. Um, how is this gonna work? Is this compatible with Tyler? We just spent eight hundred thousand dollars, uh, converting to a new financial system and I was wondering if this system that you, that, or this process that you want us to enter into through this system is compatible with Tyler and if you had consulted with Mark Hatfield, our IT Director, to ensure that it is compatible, that it's not, uh, that we're, we're not doing something that's outside of that financial system. Thank you.
There. Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Uh, no, I didn't talk with Mark on that. It's connected basically through the ADS system, it's one that, uh, we're using and that's where it would be, uh, recording back into it. That's where we would like to have it. Currently, there isn't any of our credit cards going into any system when we accept them. They're all just, uh, entered into the Nevada State Bank.
Michael, would you have a problem with if we trailed this item briefly until we can, uh, um, talk to Mark and make sure that we're not going to do anything that will compromise the new financial management system? Is Mark here this week or is he still?
That's, that would be fine, there's not a problem with that. There's other counties that are used in the, in the Nevada, so, uh-
Sure, and I think that's great and I, I love the idea. I just wanna make sure that, uh, that we are not unwittingly following the law of unintended consequences here. So, if we could just trail this until, maybe, maybe Liz could get Mark and, oh, Lorena's, uh, IMing him. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, we'll come back to that item.
Okay.
Nine, okay, we'll go to our, uh, ten, uh, fifteen timed item recess to the Knight County, uh, Board of Road Commissioners. Lorraine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll open the Knight County Board of Road Commissioners for March first. We have three timed agenda items, which is all three are to set public hearings to hear individual roads or resolutions. Uh, RC two thousand ten sixty-four, two thousand eleven oh-two and two thousand eleven oh-three. Now, this is, I'm sorry, this is to have the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against any of the three items? Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to adopt resolutions, RC twenty ten sixty-four, RC twenty eleven oh-two and oh-three.
Second.
I have a first and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to remove item one, the action item to approve minutes that we don't have. Is there any general public comment for the road commission? Okay, we'll close that item, move on to item number three as an action item and that's the general road report by the Public Works Director. Good morning, Mr. Fanning.
Good morning.
Almost had an answer.
Yes, I did. There's two things that I would like to actually, uh, report on this morning is, uh, we have, uh, actually us and the crew in, in Gabs has actually brought the well in, uh, in the second round. And this is actually what we're gonna kinda deem as a Ray Dumar Well. He actually picked a site and it was actually a good location and, uh, we have possibly a, a great well. Uh, they have brought the well in now, uh, they've got it cased and, uh, today we're actually putting a surround, if you will, to actually encase this well so it's a, a wellhead safety protection berm, if you will, should we get flooding or whatever out there. So, we've got some good information on that well. Uh, water samples are still coming back, uh, they're looking good to this point and, uh, hopefully, uh, fingers crossed, we'll get some good results for the Gabs well that'll actually support the, uh, the temporary backup that they have currently in their facility. Moving on from that, uh, we actually have, uh-
Dave?
Yes.
Can I interrupt?
Yes.
Because one thing that you didn't do was pat your own back, because by doing this and turning that monitor well into a production well, they have saved us upwards of two hundred thousand dollars in doing so.
At least.
Oh, well done, well done.
Thank you, I will pass that on. The other thing is, is I've actually met with the, uh, new owners of the Mizpah this morning regarding the actual flow sidewalks and, uh, we actually have some active interest right here in the downtown Tonapah area to actually improve the downtown. And, uh, what you guys might see is actually some sidewalk repair, drainage repair also, uh, coming up here shortly. Uh, it sounds very promising and, uh, the actual information that has come forward out of the meeting this morning was based on trying to get their operation open come July. And, uh, I wanna do everything that I can possibly do to actually get these sidewalks in on the downtown front as we have actually slated with Public Works for actually phase number two. Uh, this'll be a portion of a couple of other sections within the downtown area. Uh, that is actually the most current update that I could actually get the board this morning.
If we had a formal loss control program, that would be at the top of my list because those sidewalks are in such horrible condition and this county owns them.
Yeah.
You know, and, and, and right now in the front of the building, they plan on actually, uh, uh, taking that, uh, hump out, if you will, uh, to five feet back of curb, if you will, as you drive by there today. And the first thirty inches is actually NDOT right-of-way. We're gonna, stretch myself and, and Bill Bunting is actually going to meet with NDOT here in the next couple of weeks with our engineer onsite and try to see what we can do with NDOT and try to work out an elevation height for ADA grant clearance and be legal.
Dave, I'm, uh, I'm writing a grant for the town of Tonapah. NDOT is offering, well, they've got four million dollars to spread across the entire state for communities of less than five thousand. You have to be less than five thousand to qualify and it's for downtown, um, redevelopment and, um, economic development. The deadline's coming up in March, but you might see if you could write a grant to get some money for sidewalks.
Okay.
We're gonna try to finish out the Brownfields project, um, down there at the Pocket Park in front of the fire station.
Would I send that to you then or who would I address that to?
No, don't send it to me, I'll send you the, I'll send you the information I got from NDOT. Um, I'm sorry, I didn't think of that until just now, but, um, you'd, you'd kinda have to hustle a little, but it's not a difficult process, it's just basically four sheets of paper and you check some boxes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would love to actually just apply for anything that we can possibly have, be in the running for, you know?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
We actually put him through the paces and he's pretty good at hustling. He got in paperwork for a grant from the-
He's a racehorse.
Yes, he is. Of course, you always ride, ride your best horse into the ground, you know, so we gotta be careful of that. Is there anything else, Dave?
That is it, Commissioners.
Okay.
Did you learn that on the ranch?
Yes, ma'am, I've ridden my best horse into the ground a number of times. It's not Dan, he's the colt, he's next. Okay, we'll move on to items four through ten and with our district attorney's approval, we can take those as one action item. And this is discussion deliberation impossible, decision to set a date, time and location for public hearing.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I move to set the public hearing dates and times for all of these, um, four through ten. Ten fifteen AM, April fifth, two thousand eleven, during the regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting in Tonapah.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have one, one question first.
Oh, sorry.
How are you doing in the legislature on that bill about, um, you wanted to make some changes on the agenda?
Streamlining the process?
Yeah.
So far, I have met no opid, opposition until, uh, the right-of-way department at the NDOT has some concerns about using the word validation in the definition of state validation. So, the meeting I had with them yesterday, I gave them a list of synonyms, um-
Isn't that what the process is called, validation? How can you have a problem calling something what it is?
Well, also, the individuals that I met with were not from the right-of-way department. The individuals from the right-of-way department did not come to the meeting. So, I gave them a list of opportu, of options called synonyms for validation. I also expressed to them that if that entire section was removed from the law, I mean, if, if they changed the validation or didn't use a synonym, then it was not necessary to put it in there at all. Um, they are-
Did they agree?
They are reviewing it, the three that were there with me. I met with, uh, Dave Manning, Eric Warmuth and John, John, he's, he's their RLS. One of the concerns was, all of this work that we have done on the roads has not had an RLS involved, but we've had survey techs all the way through. Now, we have just employed an RLS as of today with the Public Works Department.
So, what is that, if we, if, if we haven't been using an RLS, what does that do to all the work we've done already?
Actually, the, the concern that, that NDOT was expressing is that in order to validate it, they wanted to know if that meant then that they were gonna have to go out with an RLS and prove everything we've done. I dispelled those fears because I took them through, I gave them our process.
Why would they care since they're minor county roads, whether we used a licensed surveyor or not?
Actually, because there are funds that would be made available to the state as those numbers increase.
Oh, I see.
Not through fuel tax.
Follow the money.
Not through fuel tax money, but rural safety money, if I'm not mistaken, Dave, is that correct?
Okay.
Okay, so they feel a certain obligation, they feel like I'm holding their feet to the fire saying they have to, uh, prove it. Now, they are not concerned about the process that we are taking. They like our process, but they wanna build our process into the requirement of the law so that the other counties at least bring in the same standard of work.
Oh, okay, good.
Now, that, that's nice, it really is nice. I imagine there's gonna be some other smaller counties that are gonna be irritated with me. But, um, but if you want the job, you have to do the job right eventually. They might as well do it right now.
Yeah, well-
Yeah, I, I realize the funding is an issue.
It is an issue, but we're, we embarked on this program, um, based on the Senator's resolution. It does nothing in the law that says anybody has to do this.
Yes, there is.
There is now, okay.
No, there, it has been all along.
There always has been, okay.
It doesn't say that Knight County shall do this or any county shall do, or must, may do this.
Oh, it says shall, shall, okay.
Yes, Mr. Shinholmen.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I, I think this question's gonna be for IDA, um, can, uh, I could ask you through him or, I was back at the state yesterday. Um, what is, uh, how far out are we from here in Lola Lane? Uh, the, is there any holdup that's gonna be due soon? Is there anything that you're, you've got that's, that you're gonna tell me?
Well, I think Lola Lane's coming online fairly quickly.
Yes, it, yes, we are. Um, this week, we actually, uh, completed the, um, descriptions for the actual-
Easements.
Temporary easements that we need to actually access. And, uh, that was actually completed this week, on Monday. And, uh, that'll actually be moving through the DA's office. And then I have to go through the, the, uh, process of actually probably renting or purchasing some steel plates to actually bridge the, uh, irrigation ditch. And that's kind of a secondary thing, but we, now that we've actually got this one item out of the way for the description on both ends, we're actually working on that now.
Okay, so, uh, there's something you need us to approve? Can, can we hope to see that on the next agenda maybe?
Yes.
Or, okay, 'cause this, just to help those folks in that area. I appreciate that, thank you. Yeah, Madam Chair, I got one question for Dave, uh, Dave, I wanna congr, uh, um, give my appreciation to your, your workers in Perump on the great job they did on Unicorn to correct that water flow issue that's there and hopefully those, uh, uh, those residents will all appreciate that. Um, we, I think you and I both know that, uh, you can't push water uphill, so, um, but I think that'll improve-
Yes, you can, you can push water uphill towards money, every time.
Everything goes towards money, everything goes.
Well, you, you can push it uphill with a, with a thing called a pump and that's what I was going next, that, you know, if, if it floods out again, then, you know, the only option is to pump it out of there and that would be, you know, that would be a local, um, issue where those, they'd have to do an improvement district to do that. But again, they did a wonderful job really quickly, I was amazed.
Thank you.
Went by in the morning, they were putting the flags out and back at night, it's all done. It's amazing, thank you.
And I will pass that along to the crew because a lot of that in there was actually to be raised up because it was actually so low in, in a major chunk of the areas and driveway culverts had to actually be dug out and then reset, so, majority of that, I do appreciate that.
A lot of hat of boys for Dave today.
Yes, Dave always gets accolades.
He should.
I have one more comment. Even though I have pointed out some of the challenges with NDOT to get this through, they are working with me very well and I have all confidence in the world that we will work it out, so I don't see that there's gonna be an issue. Now, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I think I have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned, I'll return it to you, Chairman.
Did you get, who made that motion and, okay, a second.
Okay, we're back to the Board of County Commissioners, we'll go to our ten thirty timed item, uh, recess to the Knight County License and Liquor Board. Commissioner Borowski, you're up.
Thank you, uh, I'd like to open this meeting in Knight County License and Liquor Board, uh, Tuesday, March first, two thousand eleven. First item on the agenda, approval of the minutes, we don't have any. Second item, general public comment, three minute time limit per person and requested to be limited to items not listed on the agenda, no action will be taken by the Board. Is there any public comment in Perump? Hearing none, any public comment in Tonapah, we'll close, public comment.
Hey, Kelly. Yeah, he sent me an email last night, said he wouldn't be able to make it.
Yeah, okay, for this time, but next-
Soon as Commissioner Hollis comes back, we'll, we'll move forward.
You had a forum.
Yeah, I know, but I like to have him sitting next to me, gives me-
Oh, that warm and fuzzy feeling.
I'm here. Is, is there- I'm here. Okay, thank you. Before we go to the consent agenda, is there any changes? Everything still good and I like to ask that question because once or twice, um, we went into consent and then there were some items that had some last minute clauses, so-
Motion to approve consent, second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There is one question I have and I, I should, I probably could've brought it up before and it just now dawns on me that, uh, item B says April eighth, I don't know in the back, in, uh, whatever you have there, is it eight through ten, uh, because that festival goes that whole weekend.
It's a seventy-two hour permit.
Oh, I'm sorry, what am I thinking?
It's, it starts on the eighth.
Told you I was sleep deprived.
Okay.
Never mind.
I have- I'm gonna, I'm gonna have time out for him. Okay. No, I call a time out, not you, just sit still there, man. We, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Yes.
Yes, second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Eastley, a second by Commissioner Wickman. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 I think that's five zero, the sheriff's not voting today.
Uh, yeah. No, I don't think she can vote for him, or can she?
I don't, I don't believe you're assigned to that, no.
Not quite done yet.
So, that's five zero, uh, yeah.
I just, I just noticed something on here, um, unfortunately, they just cut my, to aye.
Uh-huh.
Um, uh, item three C indicates St. Patrick's Day dinner at the community center. I don't think that's gonna be possible, so I don't know if they have a different, different location for that.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Which means that they'll have to change their-
Uh, shall I make a motion to reconsider?
Um, and I guess maybe what we need to do is, 'cause I don't know if we know where it's gonna be held.
Well, here's the thing about the seventy-two hour permits.
Seventeenth is the problem.
The seventy-two hour permits, um, according to the way, the ordinance reads, they don't even need to come before the Board. Uh, the Chairman can approve those outside the Board. So, if you wanna go back to them and ask them what their alternate location is and then get back to Butch.
You happy with it? Yeah. Okay.
All right, we have nothing for brothel, gaming or liquor.
Closed on.
Item seven?
Motion to adjourn. No second, we're stuck, we're stuck.
Well, I'll step down as chairman and I'll second it and, uh, we have, um, motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero, that's how you handle it.
Lorena, did you hear from Mark?
Yes. Michael wants to hold this and, uh, re-agendize it for March fifteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're back at Board of County Commissioners and we'll take a five minute break.
Okay, we'll go to our 10:45 timed item. It'll be 10:45 A, action, public hearing, discussion, deliberation, possible decision to adopt, amend, and adopt or reject Nye County Bill 2010-20, a bill proposing to amend Chapter 16.28 Nye County Code relating to division of land within the Perump Regional Planning District.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Wait a minute.
We have to have a public hearing.
We have a public hearing.
I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Does anyone wish to speak on this matter?
There's nothing in Perump.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Motion to adopt Bill 2010-20 and set an effective date of 3/21/11.
Second.
Oh, yeah.
I have a motion by Commissioner Eastley to adopt and set a date of 3/21/11 at...
No, 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 no. We're not setting the hearing, we're adopting the bill.
Oh, 2010, oh, excuse me.
The effective date, yeah. My motion was to adopt the bill and set an effective date of March 21st.
Set an effective date of 3/21/11.
Right.
Okay.
And I second it.
Second by Commissioner Wickman. Further discussion? Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes five-zero. Okay, we'll go to Item B, action, public hearing, discussion, deliberation, possible decision to adopt, amend, and adopt or reject Nye County Bill 2010-21, a bill proposing to amend Chapter 16.20 of Nye County Code relating to division of land within area of Nye County with the exception of Perump Regional Planning District.
Open the public hearing?
I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this bill? Close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, motion to adopt Bill 2010-21 and set an effective date of 3/21/11.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Eastley to adopt Bill 2010-21, setting the date of 3/21/11, effective date. Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes five-zero. Item C, action, public hearing, discussion, deliberation, possible decision to adopt, amend, and adopt or reject Nye County Bill 2011-02, an ordinance proposing to amend Nye County Code Title II Administration and Personnel, Chapter 2.19 of Nye County Code entitled "Bailey and Manhattan Advisory Board," by deleting any and all reference to Bailey.
Open the public...
I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we adopt Bill Number 2011-02 and set an effective date of March 21st.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Eastley to adopt Bill 2011-02, setting the date of 3/21/11. Further discussion? Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes five-zero. We'll go to Item G, I'm really, 11G. What is agency status report?
That's my report. It's in the backup.
Okay, we're going to go to 11G. Commissioner Wickman?
It's in the backup. It's there for the public.
It's just a report.
If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great job.
Yeah. It is. It's interesting. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Item 20A, action, discussion, deliberation, possible decision on request, setting the date, time, and location for a public hearing on Nye County Bill 2011-03, a bill proposing to amend Nye County Code Title 12, Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places by adding Chapter 12.10 Off-Road Vehicle Events.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to propose Bill Number 2011-03 and set a date, time, and location of March 15th, 2011, at 10:45 a.m. in the commission chambers in Perump.
Second.
And Mr. Coonsey? I'm assuming that this is your work?
That's correct.
That's correct?
That's correct, yes.
You did a terrific job.
Actually, Marla, or I'm sorry, Michelle...
No, no, no. This is setting a public hearing. I just proposed the bill, so we're setting...
Okay.
Michelle did this work. Also, just to remind you, we need to do first reading by title.
Yes, right. I know.
Call for the question.
Yeah. Call for the question. Call for the question?
Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes five-zero. Did you get that motion?
Yeah, she got it. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Nye County Bill 2011-03 is a bill proposing to amend Nye County Code Title 12, Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places by adding Chapter 12.10 Off-Road Vehicle Events to provide for the permitting and regulation of off-road vehicle events affecting any county road in order to provide for the public safety and the protection of county roads in and around the area of the off-road vehicle event.
We'll go to 23A, finance.
No.
Action, discussion, deliberation, and possible decision to, one, accept or reject or all responses and provide direction to staff on request qualification for 2010-43, assistance with updating the Nye County Hazard Mitigation Plan, and not to exceed an amount of $34,747.50.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Based on the recommendation of the review committee, I move to award the contract to Dyer Engineering for a cost not to exceed $34,747.50.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Eastley to award the contract to Dyer...
Engineering?
Engineering.
That's based on staff recommendations?
Staff, based on staff recommendations, at a not exceeding amount of $34,747.50, and authorize execution of the contract.
Yes, thank you.
Two seconds.
I always forget that part.
Commissioner Wickman, second up. Further discussion? Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes five-zero. We'll go to Item B, action, discussion, deliberation, and possible decision to, one, accept or reject any and all responses to provide direction to staff for request proposed for 2010-44, prompt janitorial contract. The low bid is $92,374.92 per year.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I had a problem with this one. I don't know if anybody realizes that if we award this contract, it's actually going to force a layoff. I think we have one full-time employee and four full-time employees? One full-time and four part-time. Okay. So I was really concerned about this. I don't, have we gotten the union involved? I know that the union contract is pretty specific in that the only reasons we can lay off employees is because of lack of work or lack of funds, and this contract doesn't say either one of those things to me, so if I'm wrong, I want somebody to tell me.
I think if you look in their...
Yeah, I would.
...contract, you'll find that...
Mr. Coonsey's...
Hello? Mr. Coonsey has the floor right now.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mark.
I know there's been issues raised with this, and we've researched it, we've looked at it, and basically where this comes down is that the county, even under the collective bargaining agreement, retains certain management rights. Part of the rights that we retain is the ability of determining the mode and method, manner and method of how we provide services. So, and it's not a right that the county has given away in the collective bargaining agreement. So the county certainly has the capability of determining the mode and method, the method and manner of how the services are being provided by the government. What I've done, and I've done some research on this, and just for the edification of the board, and really to make a record here, is that what I've been told, what is driving this, is the fact that the reality of it is with the four part-time and one full-time employees we have, they are not really performing the services that are being contracted for, they just simply don't have enough people to really do the services. And the services that can be provided under this contract is actually more services than we can do with our current employees, and secondly, for a lot less money.
Okay.
So traditionally, when you look at this issue, whether or not you can privatize under a collective bargaining agreement, the courts have really, they've looked at three different tests. One doesn't apply because we're not new services. One of the tests, they talked about nature services test, which is, are these services that have customarily historically been provided by civil service? Now, states that follow that particular, which is probably the most expansive view, even states that have followed that view, have looked at this issue from the standpoint of that there's a valid reason for why you're doing it, and you're not doing it for the purpose of just a sham trying to lay off individuals, that the county still has the capabilities of doing it under that test. Now, I'll also tell you that Nevada does not adopt that test. So even under the most liberal test out there, Nevada, there's actually a Nevada Supreme Court case that has addressed this issue, and that is University of Nevada versus State Employees Association, 1974 case, that has put Nevada in the category of what they call, you cannot take this action if it's in bad faith, which means that you have to do so in good faith. And one of the things that they've looked at as far as acting in good faith, or what it says is you can't act in bad faith arbitrarily or capriciously in attempt to evade the civil service laws. So that's the legal standard. Are you doing this in bad faith arbitrarily, capriciously, to evade the civil service law? And I think clearly under the Nevada case that we have, and the vast majority of decisions that the courts have looked at, it's my legal opinion that it is clearly within this board's authority to privatize the services under this janitorial contract. What that will then trigger, which is part of the collective bargaining agreement...
We know what it will trigger.
Is how you then deal with a laid-off employee.
Right.
That's what the union has contracted for, is the procedure of dealing with a laid-off employee. And I think what the union argument is, is really putting the cart before the horse, is that they're basically saying is that if what you're doing is going to create a layoff, then therefore you have to go through all these layoff procedures to start with, and that, to me, is not anywhere close to what the legal authority is. And so my opinion is, is that any employees that would be adversely affected, at that point in time, obviously, they are being laid off for a lack of work, and we would have to go through the procedures with...
Well, for one.
For one person, that's correct.
Just one, because the others are...
That's correct.
Part-time. So, Mr. Coonsey, thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion.
And I have a comment. I have a comment, too.
Oh, okay. Whenever you...
Well, I think you can make the motion and then discuss it.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Chairman, based on the recommendation of staff, I move to accept the bid from Floppy Mop Incorporated of Las Vegas and award the contract to them. Accept the change in payment terms from net 30 days as originally proposed to net 14 days, and authorize the execution of the contract with this bidder.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Eastley to accept the low bid of $94,300...
$92,000.
$92,374.92 by, what is it, Flop?
Floppy Mop?
Floppy Mop, out of Las Vegas, and they changed the net from 30 to 14 days and execute the contract. Second by Commissioner Wickman. Further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Borowski?
Thank you. I hate to throw this at you again, Julie, but we got a different DA now, so maybe he'll back me up on this one. And I'll just get a tiny bit off this item for a second. There was just a bid awarded to a landscaping company out of Las Vegas for the new jail. Somehow, we're not getting out to the people in Nye County, and I really wish there was a way to do something other than just put it in the paper two times.
We need to stay on the agenda item of the janitor... I'll go back to Commissioner's management comments, if you'd like that, but we need to stay on the agenda item, and it's the janitorial contract.
Okay. Then I'll talk about the janitorial contract. I believe there's people in Nye County that could have handled this if they would have been, if there had been a little more advertising put out.
Commissioner, there were...
There would have been a little more...
There were companies that were local that bid on the project. They just weren't the low bidder.
No.
Okay.
Perump Valley Carpet Care bid almost $190,000.
I understand that.
We have increased our advertising from just the Perump Valley Times and the Las Vegas Review Journal to be included on our website now, so...
I guess my question is, do we meet the requirements of the law?
We more than meet the requirements for the advertisers, and we did have one bidder out of Perump.
We actually gave this longer than we normally give on RFPs as well.
This was bid in accordance with the statutes.
Absolutely.
Well, I, we'll talk about this to later day, but I'd still like to improve on that system.
Mr. Chairman, before you vote, unfortunately...
I've got another question.
Okay, I did have another legal comment I needed to make.
Okay. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just noticing the range of bids here, from 208,000, that's the high, and low down to 92,000. I understand, first off, we're going to save money by doing this. I like that. I like that idea. I'm glad that the, our DA has told us we should be covered as far as the union. as the union. I'm just concerned here that, I know we always take the low bid. It's, I guess this is a, I, I just would, I'm going to hate to see this, you know, next month, they come back and say, oh gee, we forgot, and it needs, seems like we always get this comeback for more, more money. So, I, I just, I just want to say now that I, I don't know, maybe I've already said it, I'm, I'm concerned that two-hundred-and-eight thousand is a high and ninety-two thousand is low, and everybody else is right in between there. We got the Perump for one-eighty-eight, another one in Vegas for one-thirty-two, another one in Vegas for one-thirty. Those two being close together, that's probably closer to what it's really going to cost. I'm just, I guess being cautious or, I don't know. And then later, if we can discuss what Commissioner Borowski's trying to bring up, but I know that that's out of this, so that's all I really have to say.
I'm not sure I understand what the, your point was.
It's just that, it's, it's such a wide range, and then at ninety-two thousand, I'm, I'm wondering that-
Change orders.
When we take that, is this, how do we make sure that the person who bid it do that job?
You have complete authority over change orders.
Yes. My, my notes in my backup were whether or not this company could actually provide all of that service for that low price. I, we also had those same concerns. We did have a meeting with them, and we advised them at that time that they were still within the timeframe- Right.
Where they could withdraw that bid, but they chose not to do so.
Yeah, all, that, that huge scope of work for ninety-two thousand, I was, I made myself a note that I would be surprised if they could.
We had that same concern and-
Hold on just a minute. Mister Coonsy, you got the floor?
Just quickly, the other thing I needed to add to this, and unfortunately, it was totally my, my fault, I didn't catch it soon enough, but we need to add an insurance provision in here.
I had that in my notes.
Yeah. It just slipped by us, there's no insurance provision in there, so we need to make sure we've added an insurance clause. There's an identity clause in there, but we need to make sure that they have proper levels of insurance that will, that will, and that the standard insurance provisions that we put in there, we just need to insert that into the agreement.
Good. Bob, do you want to talk now?
I was just going to say, we had the same concerns, we had a meeting with them, we also contacted previous employers that they had, and they were given rave reviews, so we moved forward with it.
Is it necessary that I amend my motion? I'm going to amend my motion and make this, the award of this contract contingent upon them providing proof of insurance.
Well, just inserting a standard insurance clause into the agreement.
Okay, inserting the standard insurance clause into the agreement.
I'll second.
I have amended motion.
Did you second my motion the first time? So, you'll amend?
Yes.
Your second, okay.
I have amended motion to insert the insurance clause in there, and there was amended second. Further discussion? Call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Item twenty-three C. Action, discussion, deliberation, and possible decision to, one, accept or reject any and all bid, and provide direction, staff, request for proposal for bid twenty-eleven dash oh two, multipurpose training facility, road improvements.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Motion to appro, to award the bid to Wolfenstein Construction based on the recommendations of staff.
And?
And.
And to exec, execute the contract. I know why we're missing it.
Can I make a, a comment before we proceed here?
Please.
I'm not sure how old this contract is. Okay.
Well, I have a motion by Commissioner Eastly.
Mm-hmm, that's me.
To-
No, I made the motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Wickman to award the contract to Wolfenstein Construction for the amount of forty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars, and execute the contract. Second by-
Wait a minute, that's not the right agenda item.
No, it isn't.
The low bid is seventy-six, four eighty-three eight.
Oh, excuse me. Okay, I, I wanted the wrong one.
Sam, did you get my motion?
Did you get that motion?
Yeah, just say motion by Lorinda. If they didn't get it, she'll-
Second by Commissioner Eastly, I believe. Further discussion?
Yeah, I, I had a question, and I, I don't know how old this contract form is, but we didn't see this until it hit the agenda item. In my review of it, it makes reference to the fact that the company is obligated to provide compensation insurance under chapter six seventeen, which is the, the Industrial Disease Act. It makes no reference to having a requirement that they provide workers' compensation coverage under the Industrial Insurance Act.
But we need to change that.
Yeah, we definitely need to change that.
But they're covered under disease, though.
Well, but this is, this is going to be a, probably a few-week project. I don't imagine we need to worry about occupational diseases. So, we need to amend the contract to change from the Occupational Disease Act to compensation required by the industrial insurance, the, that Industrial Insurance Act.
Are those numbers close enough? Is that simply a typo?
Uh, no.
Oh, it isn't?
Because it's title, because they make reference to the title of the statute.
Okay.
Because the occupational disease is actually chapter six, six seventeen, the Industrial Insurance Act is six sixteen A through D.
Okay.
So, but we just need to make that correction, and I don't know if that's Dave's contract, but it's probably one that's just been standardly used.
Yeah.
Mister Chairman.
A hundred years.
And since, and I, just to, just to make, clarify, because this is a construction project-
Sure.
It's important we have that in there because we are, we are, we could be responsible if they don't provide workers' comp coverage.
No, this is leftover.
Yeah, this is actually an old contract.
Yeah.
And it's something that hasn't hit you guys yet, and it is actually a piece of what needs to be examined as well, so.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
I would amend my motion to award the bid to Wolfenstein Construction and execute the corrected contract.
Did I second that first motion?
Yes.
I'll amend my second.
Did you get the amendment there? Further discussion? Call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Passes five zero. Item D. Action, discussion, deliberation, and possible decision to, one, accept or reject any and all bids, provide direction to staff for request for proposal for bid twenty thousand, twenty-eleven dash oh one. It's an MC eight-hundred coal mix, three-eighth parking lot mix, and the amount of the low bid is forty-two thousand, eight, nine eighty.
Do we have the same problem with this contract?
No, I, but I had a question on this, this one, though, just from the standpoint of who's delivering it, or are we getting it from the plant, are they delivering?
They normally take care of all of it, don't they, Dave?
Your coal mix, who's delivering now?
Wolfenstein.
That will be the plant. That will be the plant, so we're picking it up and bringing it to where we-
That is correct. We're picking it up at the plant.
Then I have no problems at all with the contract.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to award the contract to Wolfenstein Construction and execute the contract.
Based on the recommendation of staff?
Based on the recommendation of staff.
I'll second your motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wickman to award the contract to Wolfenstein, Wolfenstein Construction based on staff recommendation, and to authorize the execution of the contract. Second by Commissioner Eastly. Further discussion? Call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Item E. Action, discussion, deliberation, and possible decision to approve a contract with Perump Valley Museum and Historical Society regarding the payment of tax receipts for the operation of the Perump Museum.
Brian, you did a great job with this, or whoever worked on this.
Brian, you did a great job. You did a great job, Mr. Brian, yeah.
Yeah, this, this one was mine.
Yeah, yeah. Was the information I sent you helpful at all?
Very helpful. You know, trying to unravel everything, and everybody knows the mess that we've been wrestling with, and we had several meetings with the Perump people and working with HR, you know, we were able to pull this together.
I have one question, Mister Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
We're providing these payroll and accounting services to essentially a nonprofit organization, and I know that we do that for a couple of nonprofits. Is there any desire on the, or is there any need to charge an administrative fee for the provision of these services, or is?
That was, that was something that was not discussed, because I, I think it's just been generally done, and really, all you've been doing is taking more money from the,
Yeah.
From the museum fund.
Can you give me an example in section three? The last sentence, Nye County shall charge back against the museum fund any expenses paid by Nye County related to the operation and maintenance. What, can you give me an example? Would it be like a-
That's just a, yeah, that's a, just a generic provision that if the, the county does have to go in and do any maintenance on the building-
Oh, okay.
Because it is maintenance on the building in which the, the museum is being operated, it would be a legitimate expense that could be charged back against the fund.
Okay, great. Mister Chairman, thank you, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Eastly to approve, second by Com, Commissioner Schenhopin. Further discussion? Call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes five zero.
Just to remember, the board on Saturday, they were planning on meeting yesterday, they were hoping to get the signed contract from their point of view, to me. Unfortunately, I didn't get it, but it's my understanding that everything's going to go through, so we'll get the commission to sign it, and then we'll have them sign it.
Again, thank you, this was a mess-
Thank you very much.
-that has been-
Let's get that museum open.
Going on for a long time, and thank you very much.
Great.
Okay, we'll go to twenty-five HR, it'd be twenty-five A. Action, discussion, deliberation, and possible decision and direction to, one, eliminate one executive secretary position in CEA grade ten to the Tonopah District Attorney's Office, two, authorize the addition of an UISFA caseworker in CEA grade nine due to the approval of the position by the Nevada Welfare Department, and three, authorize the interdepartmental transfer of Christina Kemp, Legal Secretary.
Motion to approve and based on the recommendation of Human Resources. And I want to make one thing, I, I really feel I need to read this into the record. I've, I've received many emails about this subject, about the subject of nepotism, and I've seen things on the blogs and the Perump Valley Times, and I just want to make it perfectly clear that with this individual for whom we are approving this transfer, she's not going to be reporting to anybody she's related to, so.
That is correct.
Okay.
I avoid those blogs.
I'll second.
I meet them head-on, Dan.
I have a motion by Commissioner Eastly to approve, second by Commissioner Wickman. Further discussion?
Yes, Mister Chairman.
Okay.
Everything's fine. The only concern to me is the position is two-thirds funded by the state, and-
Right.
Our, we, we are going in with eyes open that the state may cut even more money this year. I mean, is that going to affect this?
No. I, I guess it's always possible, but, but these funds, these child support funds-
Okay.
-have never, never been cut. These are really special creatures, particularly since a lot of it's federal-
Yeah, it's the, the state's, the past.
Yeah.
And they, and they've always given us money for indigent care, too, so.
Well, no, that's something different. That's on your tax, that's on your tax bill. That's what allows them to sweep that.
And they just kept it, though, yeah.
Yes.
Swept it, yeah. I, that's what I was concerned with, is that the two-thirds funded by the state-
Yeah.
And I'm looking, you know, because it's not going to be pretty in the next few months.
No, but, but the reality of what, what this does, though, is that this is, we're taking a secretary's position and moving it into this child support position that's been authorized, so that the effect is, we are actually reducing my payroll by two-thirds of a payroll position.
The burden on the general fund.
Reducing your payroll by that?
Yes.
Good. Any more you want to bring forward, let us know.
Sorry. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Call for the question.
Call for, call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Passes five zero.
Thank you. We just tied you in a, if we did approve it already, we just tied you in a double knot, that's all.
Okay, we're going to go twenty-seven A. Action, discussion, deliberation, and possible decision to, one, approve the minimum understanding MOU enabling Nye County to become a cooperative agency with the Bureau of Land Management, BLM. Two, designate Gary Hollis as primary contact representative for the RMP. And three, designate Levi Crowder as the secondary representative.
Mister Chairman, I do have a question.
Yes.
Is this something that you agreed to do and you wanted to do?
I'd be happy to do it.
And I would have one request, that a big chunk of that is in my district, and I have just this outstanding working relationship with those people, so if you could keep me involved in that, that would, and I think part of your district is in there, too. Yeah.
I'd be happy to.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Eastly to approve, second by Commissioner Wickman. Further discussion? Call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. We'll go to item twenty-seven C. Action, discussion.
I was pulled.
Item C?
B.
B.
Oh, B was pulled, yeah.
Item C.
Okay, sorry.
Action, discussion, deliberation, and possible decision to reclassify funds from emergency services for training facility project to the Public Safety Cooperative Agreement in amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand.
Mister Chairman, I only had one question about this, and Darrell, I-
Only one?
Yeah, only one. And I, I think we talked about this, Darrell. I, I was confused on this. I, I didn't, there really wasn't anything in the backup, but in the unlikely event that NWRPO goes away, does, does, what will happen? Does this get consumed by the general fund, or?
This, this Public Safety Cooperative Agreement was a cooperative agreement with the Yucca Mountain folks that was very narrowly tailored to emergency services, and we're just doing some housekeeping here to obligate these funds at the end of the grant period to allow us to finish out this cooperative agreement. The, we had to deobligate another contract, which was on here a couple of months ago from Beck Environmental, that was tying up some of the funds here, so we couldn't charge to it at the time, so we had to deobligate an existing contract, identify exactly how much money we had left, and then we wanted to reclassify these funds over to and allow it's used for the training facility.
So, the federal government's already approved this?
Yes.
Okay, then motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Eastly, second by Commissioner Wickman. Further discussion? Call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. We'll go to twenty-eight A. Expertise communication and conflict of interest disclosure statement. Anybody have a, conflict of interest?
Nope.
Okay, we'll go to twenty-eight B. Action, discussion, deliberation, and possible decision on a request for, one, to approve an application for a parcel map proposing to divide approximately forty-one point six-five acres into one eight-point-eight-two acre parcel, and one three-point-eight-seven acre parcel, and one twenty-eight point nine-six, six acre parcel, bullfrog land development.
Mister Chairman. Based on the recommendation of staff, I move to approve the bullfrog land development parcel map subject to the conditions of approval as outline, subject to the conditions[1734.85] as outlined in the conditions of approval section of this report, after having made the findings outlined in the staff report. My, the second part of my motion will be to approve the waiver request based on the recommendation of staff, because no new road construction is being proposed on this application.
I'll second.
Sam, you got that?
I have a-
Good boy.
-motion to approve, second by Commissioner Wickman. Further discussion? Hold it down, timeout.
Oh, she-
Dan is talking to himself over here, and I think he's talking to me, so.
I was, I was, actually, she-
Call for the question, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Appalled, passes five-zero.
I get unwittingly dragged into sidebars here.
Thank you, Kelly.
Okay, we'll go to item thirty-four, general public comment. Hearing none. Item thirty-five, announcements?